Good afternoon. Welcome to the meeting of the Oakliss County Board of Commissioners. Tuesday, September seventeenth at three P M. We'll begin this meeting with an invocation led by the senior pastor of Wright Baptist Church, Dr. David Coys, followed by the pledge of allegiance with the flag presentation, the Choctawatchie High School Junior ROTC. Please stand with me.
Let's pray. Lord God, you are good. You are kind to us. You're compassionate towards us. The things that are before us as matters of business and matters of heart today are a concern of yours. I mean, lift them up to you and ask for your blessing, then, Lord God. You provide every good thing that we need. And we ask that you would provide that for this county, Lord, for those who are administrating, those who are serving, Lord, those who are supporting in this room, Lord. We ask provision in the good ways, in their abilities, using their skills, Lord, their counsel, their opportunities. We ask that you would give us not just insight, but precision on these kind of decisions that have to happen today, visions about what's ahead, things to accept, plans to adopt, Lord. We ask that you would give us reliable decisions, Lord God, and bless this county, we pray. We also ask that the best paths ahead, it's not just good paths, but the best paths, not be evident to those who are leadership positions, Lord God. Bless them with that. We pray in Psalm thirty-two, this, that you instruct and teach us in the way that we should go. And with your counsel, you give us loving insight on what that is. So we trust you for that guidance, Lord God. Give us receptive hearts and minds to your will and to what's wise, Lord God. Help us to do well for your glory in your name. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Strong stand.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Commissioners. This is that opportunity we have every so often in front of the board to recognize what is our most valuable asset here in Oakliss County, and that's our thousand-plus employees strong that we have. We do so at certain milestones in their careers. Have two individuals I would like to recognize this afternoon. One is a twenty-five-year service award and one is a sixteen-year service award, and that's also running concurrently with his retirement. So first, I'd like to recognize Gabby Arceo. Gabby is an engineer, too, in the water and sewer department, and this is his twenty-five-year service award. And next, I'd like to ask Billy Martin to come forward. Billy is the Buildings and Grounds Specialist at Water and Sewer. He is a smiling face you see when you come to the Water and Sewer Department, keeps the building looking good. It's sixteen years and he's retired.
Strong stand with the county administrators.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman Commissioners. I have just two brief updates this afternoon. I just want to remind the board, myself, I believe the chairman, and there might be one or two others that are be traveling to Pensacola tomorrow and Thursday for the FAC Innovation Days Conference being held in Pensacola this year. So we will be attending that on behalf of Oakliss County. And lastly, I've reached out to you individually about moving the November fifth meeting, which is Tuesday, to November fourth. I believe the board's in agreement with that. However, we need to set a time for that meeting. So that is a Monday, coming off a weekend. We can hold the meeting at our normal eight-thirty A M. time. Or we can move it to one-thirty if the board prefers. So I'd like some feedback on what you'd like to do, and we'll get that set and get the calendar to reflect that. If you have a preference.
If your calendars work, an afternoon meeting would be best.
I see some head nods for afternoons. I believe we've got consensus for an afternoon meeting. We'll set that at one-thirty, Monday afternoon, the Fourth of November. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Ms. Hoshihara.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no updates today.
Thank you. Clerk Peacock.
Just had to be here, Mr. Chairman.
At this time, we'll have public comments. Had a last last-minute note to, for the first public hearing, which is the property to be heard for future land use map amendment and rezoning. I have six speaker cards for that. The applicant has asked to table this item. We will wait until it's time for the item to pick the date and time to bring it back. But I would like, in public comment, to open first to the six people who have asked to speak on that item. So we'll start with Ms. Donna Fox. If you would push the speak button on the bottom, the right. Thank you.
Okay. Good afternoon. I sent you all an email today, so I'm basically just going to read that, maybe. I'm a longtime resident on the Lancaster area, and I'd like to express concerns about the potential zoning changes and the development at the northwest corner of Lancaster and Highway twenty. We've lived at Sailboat Drive for nearly twenty-five years, and the land has always been owned by the school board, which was a key factor in our decision in purchasing. Now with the proposed property change, I believe it's critical for the community to have some voice in this change. As a real estate agent, I am not opposed to development when it's done the right way. However, the overdevelopment in Niceville has already led to issues like overcrowded schools, increased traffic, inadequate infrastructure, and rather than focusing on short-term gains for developers, I think it's time that we focus on what's good for the community and the people who live in the community, and how this land is going to be used and how it will impact the people who are in that community. A school in Deer Moss could be a great solution, but it shouldn't come at the cost of the public land at Lancaster. Instead, we suggest preserving the land for future public use or finding a balanced solution, for example, dividing the twenty-five acres into single-family zoning to align with the existing properties and the front property being commercial. And maybe a narrow park in there, because we don't have any park at all in that area. So we just would like for this to be a more open discussion, and we'd like for the property owners and the taxpayers have a say in how this property, which technically is taxpayer property, since it's school board property, how it's going to be used. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mark Signer.
Good afternoon. Mark Signer. I live in Chalamar, a resident of Oakliss County for twenty-five years. I have children that have graduated from Oakliss County School, and I still have a child in the school district. I am here in one-hundred percent support of this endeavor. I think it's, it shows a lot of foresight on the school districts' behalf to go ahead and buy a piece of property almost thirty-some-odd years ago in anticipating that the needs of the school district. As you can imagine, trying to purchase properties at the time you need the school is nearly impossible, because you will not find another twenty-five-acre piece of property on the south end of the property, south end of the county, that the school district can buy property on. It's very, very difficult when you try to meet the needs when the needs occur. And I mean, this goes into what the county has to deal with, with roads and infrastructure. It's very difficult. So I commend the county for, uh, school district for actually purchasing this property when they did, for the price they got it at. And of course, as we all well know, trying to plan for the future is very difficult. And they've found out that they don't need a school where they have the property today, but they have another piece of property they've identified that they can make a switch with, which is actually brilliant, and get it at a cost and service a need to the children of our community, which I think is imperative that we support, especially the Board of County Commissioners work hand-in-hand with the school district. So me personally, as you well know, I'm in the development business as far as the planning and zoning and engineering side of things. So I know how this works intimately, because I deal with it on a daily basis. I'm not so concerned about what's going to happen with the piece of property, because you have Land Development Code, and that Land Development Code sets out criteria regarding what can be put there, and if there is an incompatible use, it deals with all those things. So I hear all these people talk about, you know, future development, traffic, stormwater, compatibility, and all these things. All of these things are already addressed in our code. So I think that the county, the, 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 uh, Oakliss County, the board, should trust in their own process, trust in their Land Development Code, that if they do rezone this, whatever gets put on that piece of property, that it will be done in a very high-quality manner, because you've already addressed the situation of how to handle developing this county. And yes, it's not perfect, and we have problems here and there, but we're trying to keep up with it. But in this particular case, it is, I think it's imperative that we support the school district, rezone this piece of property, allow them to move forward, build the schools where they need them, so that we can support the children of this community. That's it.
Rennie Legear.
Good afternoon and hello again, everybody. Good to see you again. Wanted to say thank you. Wanted to start off by saying thank you for at the August twentieth meeting. Really appreciate you all listening to our concerns and instructing the county and the school board to work together. And want to thank both of them as well. I know that the issue unfortunately is being tabled today. But I was able to take a peek at the agenda packet and saw some of the things that they had done since the meeting and some of the concerns that they had gone ahead and addressed. And like the other citizen had pointed out there, it's definitely some Land Development Code things in there that made me feel alleviated on, you know, the stormwater concerns and some of these other ones. However, at the end of the day, you know, I know that this meeting, and I thought that we felt a little bit of pressure, because I thought at one of the meetings, it was like we had to get this done by October. So a little disappointed that, as you see, there's a lot of red. I guess I'll say ninety-nine percent probably is the neighborhood for the off chance somebody just happened to wear red today and maybe isn't a part of my neighborhood. But, you know, we definitely are here and, you know, want to, you know, not necessarily hold up the process, but we want this to be done the right way. Loved you pointing out about the park opportunity, and when I saw that that was one of the things that they were looking at doing, just thank you. That was a fantastic thing. You know, I know on September third, this was also tabled, and there were some other issues, and I did kind of tune into the meeting. Was unfortunately not able to be there in person, but one of the takeaways from one of the issues that y'all heard that day was that you unfortunately could only, you know, there was a handshake deal that had been made, I believe with the gentleman who had built the airport or hangar, something in regards to that. The whole thing that you guys had to remind him is that unfortunately, if it's not written down, if it's not in a contract, it's not enforceable. And so while it looks like the county and the school district have met in good faith to look at some of our concerns and how to address them, at this point, it looks like it's a handshake deal, not really written or, you know, enforceable or at this time. And so, you know, we are trying to follow the process, and we do trust the process. That's why so many of us showed up today. I don't know how many more tableings, you know, that much of the neighborhood will be able to come to. But, you know, if potentially, you know, I don't know if this is an option, but if there's like a opportunity maybe for a neighborhood workshop, if the school district wanted to meet in good faith with the neighborhood, I think that's something we would be very open to. You know, one of the things, we are looking for solutions, not just to bring problems to you. So one of the solutions that a group of us had come up with over the weekend is maybe looking at, you know, twenty-five acres to give a blank check to of, you know, here you go, good luck. There is land development codes. However, as you'll probably continue to hear a lot from those of us in Niceville, there's a lot of SEFCOS and storage units that already meet the Land Development Code. So we would just like to meet in good faith and potentially look at splitting the twenty-five acres into three parcels that, you know, could make it better fit into the neighborhood. Thank you so much for hearing me, and thank you.
Jim Dixon.
Maybe a little bit, this may be a little bit repetitive, but we've had some neighborhood meetings on this point, as you can probably tell. My name's Jim Dixon, and I recently sent each of you, and I did it on September ninth, an email outlining our concerns, and I'd like to briefly highlight a few key points and suggest a possible solution. My wife and I have owned our home at Six Ten Sailboat Drive in Lancaster Estates for nearly twenty-five years. When we bought the property, we, along with several other homeowners, determined that the property, the lot at Highway twenty in Lancaster was owned by the school board, which was a big positive for obvious reasons. When we learned about the proposed property exchange to support a school in Deer Moss, we were naturally curious and concerned. The deal seems to be a win-win for the developer, who could have donated the land, since a school only increases the value of Deer Moss. We attended the zoning hearing in August and were disappointed by how quickly the zoning change to mixed-use, key term, was approved with little serious consideration. We missed the commission hearing the same month due to a death in the family, but we watched it on YouTube. And we did attend the September third meeting, fighting traffic to get there. We agree with all the previous presentation issues presented to you. Our concern is with the mixed-use designation that could lead to anything, potentially clear-cutting the land and cramming apartments, building a hotel, bordering private property, as has already happened to Evans Court, or adding another gas station with all the associated issues. Now is the last, I thought it was going to be the last opportunity to voice our concerns. Our, our personal choice, my personal choice, would be dividing the property into two zones, single-family, low-density, and commercial with a narrow park existing, with, using existing vegetation as on Rocky Bayou Drive across from the, people call it the airport, the airfield, as a noise and privacy buffer. However, we understand multifamily might be important to the developer, so we propose dividing the twenty-five acres into three zones, single-family, low-density, multifamily, medium-density, and commercial along Highway twenty. Hopefully, the park aspect could still be a consideration as it would be of added value. Thank you very much. Oh, excuse me. I do have a show and tell. This is what we are proposing. This, these are all single-family homes. We're proposing single-family homes here, multifamily on Lancaster, and then commercial along Highway twenty. Thank you.
Steve Trailer.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Steve Trailer. I'm an attorney who represents Rocco Properties Incorporated. My client is- Uh, my client is, uh, party to the agreement with the school board for this exchange of this property with the Deer Moss property. Uh, I believe the commission is aware of that. Pardon? Okay, thank you. The agreement between the school board and my client is, um, contingent on the zoning and future land use designations being changed, um, to mixed use by October 1, 2024. That agreement does not provide for, um, rezoning that imposes any unique or special requirements. I, I live in a neighborhood myself and I appreciate the concerns of people that are curious about what's going to happen to property that, um, is next door to them. That's, that, that's no surprise. I think you would all, um, share those concerns. I'm sure that, um, the commission understands the reason for that requirement in the contract because property this zone for institutional use has a little, um, interest or value to a prospective non-institutional owner. If my client's agreement with the school board is consummated, then either my client or some subsequent purchaser, the property must still obtain a development order for whatever property, whatever the property will be used for in the future. Mr. Steiner, uh, spoke to that. When that happens, as I understand it, the existing land development code contains, uh, provisions for buffers that may be required depending on that future use or, or future uses. Um, that will be the appropriate time to consider things like buffers and the future uses to which this property is put consistent with that existing land development code. Uh, I share Mr. Steiner's comment to, uh, trust that process. A table of the various, um, buffer requirements, uh, that was provided, uh, to the school board by, um, Elliot Camper. He was, uh, as you know, is the director of the Oaklusa County Growth Management, um, program. Contains different levels, uh, for property, um, buffers depending on what uses, uh, those various uses. My reading of that table indicates that buffers range from no buffer at all between single family residential use and adjoining single family residential use, or up to 40 foot of a buffer between residential zone, a residential zone and industrial use. I, uh, if I'm right about that, and I believe I am, then the, it seems to me that the time to deal with things like what uses the property will be, but, but first are required. I, I say I'm out of time. I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trailer. Mitch McLaren.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Mitch McLaren. I guess I have a question for the commission. We have a 1% sales tax for the schools. And I'm not really understanding why the schools can't purchase that land versus having to do this trade and keep this property, uh, within the county to make a park. Uh, some other things that, you know, people before have mentioned. And I haven't heard, you know, in, in the discussions of why that can't happen. Uh, I do agree, uh, that the R1 zoning would probably be the best, um, use of this property and a park because of, as I mentioned before, when I speak, when I spoke at, um, the previous meeting, we don't have any county parks. We don't have playgrounds for children in the area. You know, I'd like to see that. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Dave Hensley.
County officials and county commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to speak before the commission. I have two issues to bring to your attention. First, I have an update regarding the testing at the former asphalt plant located at 106 Sunset Lane, the future location of the proposed legendary Cove subdivision. We stated in August that the owners have contracted with an environmental firm to contest, to conduct testing at the former asphalt plant site. We've been in contact with Mr. Scott Sweeney, Floor Department Environmental Protection, uh, on updates. Recently, he provided us with summary of events that are taking place since he was unable to get a formal statement from the EPA. And this is his statement. There is an ongoing environmental work being conducted at the former APAC Southeast site in Chalamar, including assessment by the site owner. Discrete areas of soil contamination have been found on the site. An EPA will continue to oversee the site along with the EP until its circular, which is Comprehensive Environmental Response Compensation Liability Act statement has been resolved. This resolution will either be through confirmed removal of the contamination or complete site screening, after which the site will be likely referred back to the EP for remedial oversight and closure. In addition, supply well samples down gradient between the site and Garner Bayou show no groundwater contamination between the well, the water tank and the site. So there's no contamination there. That's what they've seen. Mr. Sweeney said, this is not a Love Canal situation, but just small areas of contamination. So we'll keep you updated, especially when we get a statement from the EPA. Second, this past Saturday morning, there was a fatality at the intersection, North Kita Road and State Road 189. Car pulled out in front, a 76 year old woman, T-boned that car and she, and the woman driving on 1, 189 perished. All right. Last November, Ms. Ketchel, myself and Shirley Godbold were at the Walton, Oaklusa TPO meeting, expressing concerns. Ms. Godbold talked about that intersection. I talked about Eglin Parkway and Sunset, and we were told to be patient. So while we've been patient, someone has died. I plan to rally as many people at the November TPO meeting in the area to bring the fact that someone has died while we were patiently waiting for action. And I'm trying to get as many people there as possible. Thank you.
Chairman, may I?
Yes, please.
Mr. Hensley, I'm very aware that accident was a horrendous accident. It was also that very same day earlier, an accident on racetrack road at Skipper and Racetrack. Both of those intersections have been brought to the attention of FDOT. I was searching the audience for Jason Autry. We are very aware of this. FDOT does not want to put another light. Does that mean I have to stop?
No, ma'am.
Does not want to put a light that close to the other light, you know, the one, but something has to be done.
Yeah, I agree.
It's a horrible thing that some, but three people have died now there, as I'm very aware. And then the one on Skipper and Racetrack, those cars were upside down when they finished. So I, I even wrote a newsletter for those of you who are on my newsletter list. Uh, I wrote a newsletter about what we're trying to do with FDOT. It's just frustrating. I don't, I don't know, just take.
I plan to ask them, what's the number?
I know. Thank you.
John Scott.
Chairman, her commissioners, thank you for hearing from me. I have actually in the last few days received an email response to a public records request from Jimmy Miller and Odessa Cooper Poole, who I'm sure you're familiar with. My request was for a copy of the official policy for the Oaklusa County, I mean, Oaklusa County Department of Corrections. In the event that a law enforcement official brings an arrestee to the Oaklusa County Jail and a booking officer determines that they are not capable of being guilty of the crime, law enforcement brought them there for, specifically if an individual is brought there for being a convicted criminal in possession of any weaponry. It was stated by Jimmy Miller and Odessa Cooper Poole that that records request cannot be completed because the record does not exist. Now, that leads me to believe that there is no policy in place that would prevent potential rights violations if somebody were wrongfully arrested or mistakenly arrested and transported to the Oaklusa County Jail. Since I know from firsthand experience that it has happened, I would motion the board to modify the operational procedures at the Oaklusa County Jail in order to prevent further wrongful incarceration by perhaps having the booking officer contact a supervisor, reach out, be empowered to make decisions. I believe it would be much more cost effective not paying or to incarcerate people that should not be incarcerated would save money. Not wasting the state attorney's labor hours would save money. Uh, and then protecting the constitutional rights of people, always a benefit, I believe. So I can't imagine there would be any reason to oppose such a motion, but that is what I'm here for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Chief Weeks, are you here? Chief Weeks, will you come talk to us about the, the process of first appearance and the, the obsolete nature of being able to reverse someone else's arrest in the juvenile, or in the, in the criminal justice system?
Absolutely. So our, our booking officers are not law enforcement officers. They are not trained to investigate crimes or make determinations on whether probable cause exists for an arrest or not. That's not what they went to school for or to be trained on. They are trained to be corrections officers and to, and to keep, uh, inmates safe and secure within that environment. Once a police officer or an investigator who is certified to make those decisions or a judge that signs off on that warrant, uh, makes that decision. And then they would have to go through the, the normal judicial process in, in having their day in court.
Everyone has first appearance?
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have for, uh, speaker cards for public comment. Moving into the consent agenda. Oops, have a hand. Which item? Number three. Ma'am, you'll be, you'll be asked to speak during that item. So that'll be for a public hearing. So I'll call you up during the midst of that public hearing.
I'm sorry, I'm confused now.
You're, you've asked to speak on a public hearing, number three in the public hearings?
No.
When we get to that item, I'll call you forward.
Right. I'm, I don't want to, I, I saw that on the agenda after I read it. And, but that wasn't, that's not my primary
Okay.
reason for being here.
Then, then please continue.
So I can start?
Sure.
Okay, sorry. Okay, my name is Lori St. Germain. I purchased a property in the corner of, uh, Elaine Avenue and Marla Street, uh, in Fort Walton, known as Sylvania Heights. I've been there for four years. I've been robbed seven times. And I've also been robbed six times in the city of Fort Walton. So apparently I'm a blessed individual. On that corner that, uh, is across from me is owned by Luis Harmon and Ms. Harmon, uh, which I expressed to her personally, uh, is running a drug trade on the corner of that street. It's 7/24, 365 days a year, all hours of the day and night. I have attempted in the last four years to meet with the sheriff. The sheriff has not blessed me with an appointment in four years, which I found to be absolutely disgusting. It's pretty clear to me that Sylvania Heights is not on the priority list of this community. It's within a couple hundred yards of one area of affluency. And it is just shocking to me that this community cannot be brought up to the standard of the, the property next door. I cannot get people to come and work in my property because they say it's too dangerous. Here I've got tradespeople who are afraid to come to the community and work because it's too dangerous for them to work. So where do I go for services? I've also, last week I tried to make an appointment with Mr. Goodman. His secretary said he was too busy. I also called his personal law office to discuss a legal issue. The girl never called me back. So it seems to me that there's clearly an issue with this community in Sylvania Heights. It is a good area and location, and I cannot see why this municipality cannot bring it up to standard with the rest of this community. The code enforcement could go down one street and find 100 violations just in one street. And that shouldn't be coming from the residents. It should be coming from the code enforcement themselves, taking a good look in the community and seeing what they can do. We have trespass, we have loitering, 7/24, and something has to be done. I finally took, it took a year to get a street light in there, but now I find thinking the street light was going to help. All it's doing is providing the drug people with more light for their services. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public desiring to speak? Right. Consent agenda.
I'd like to pull 22.
22?
27. Motion minus 22 and 27. Go approve.
Sir. Motion by Commissioner Ketchel, second by Commissioner Ponder, minus those two items. Any further discussion? All in favor, sing five with I?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Commissioner Ketchel.
I pulled number 22 because I want to talk a little bit about this. Many of you are aware that we're putting a bike path out on Oaklusa Island between Brooks Bridge and Destin Bridge. Hopefully you've been able to see it. It's going in as we speak. It'll go along the dunes. It's 12 feet from the road. I have to tell you, when I drove it the other day, I was headed out to Destin. I got tears in my eyes because it involves five years of work from our county commission and our staff as we negotiated with, um, the Air Force Base. Um, I'm very excited about it. Uh, the funds are coming from the tourist development folks. We're so pleased about that. But then in, in addition to that, um, Jay Odom, many of you know him as a community visionary developer. Very interesting man. He said, if you ever build this thing, I'm going to give you $50,000. And that's why I pulled this. Uh, we're approving that today. The fact that he's given us a donation of $50,000 for the bike path. And I just didn't want it to go unnoticed. He's an interesting person. If you've ever had the opportunity to meet him, he was born in Japan but moved here within six weeks. He was delivered in 1956 on Good Friday by a doctor named Easter. I thought that was just kind of fun facts. He's developed over the years Uptown Station and most recently the Freedom Tech Center that fronts Louis Turner Boulevard. I just think it's remarkable that somebody cares this much about our community that they're willing to donate $50,000 for the bike path. And I just really wanted to bring that to your attention so that when many of you run into him or see him or you want to drop him a note and thank him, it's so wonderful. I'm hoping that once we get this built on the south side. And by the way, in case you don't know, we're putting bioluminescent rocks, photo, that's what they're called, photoluminescent rocks that will heat up during the day. And at night we've chosen sky blue as the color so that it'll be accessible at night. I'm so proud of this. I'm so proud of the work that this commission has done and our staff has done to make this possible. We are going to save countless lives and injuries. And I'm so grateful that we have people like Jay Odom in our community that have made a difference and that our staff has worked so hard on this to make it happen with Eglin. And I've already said to the new commander, and he just kind of smiled because it really is the real estate office, that I'd like to see it go into the north side and come down and maybe come into Women's Veterans Park. Wouldn't that be neat? So we could do a round trip. So thank you for listening to me. With that, I'll make a motion for approval.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Ketchel, second by Commissioner Boils. Any further discussion?
Just quickly, Mr. Chairman, if I may, one, certainly a great thing. I didn't know about this until it came on the agenda today, but to obviously see, you know, folks within the community, um, kind of pitching in to see a project come to fruition. I would add, when Commissioner Ketchel, obviously, you know, you had some, I think, some family tragedy that makes these issues, um, about having, you know, safe, um, paths for bicycles to, to get out there is, is an important issue to you and certainly I think for this whole commission. I think we've, I would say we, we, as far as I know, we've got this project funded. I would love to see if there's some ways this project develops, if there's some additional, um, amenities, accessories, whether it's some, you know, some bench seating or something that these dollars might be specifically directed to, to kind of further enhance the project rather than just throw them into the construction fund. Surely that would be something that I would support as the project unfolds.
Further discussion? All in favor, sing five with I? Aye. Passes unanimously. Mr. Ponder.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate that. I just wanted to pull this item and just put a little spotlight on it and read a couple of supporting facts that go along with the county's position on it. But the resolution by title is a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Oaklusa County, Florida, recognizing and making a local designation of National Estuaries Week and providing for an effective date. And I just want to read a few highlights, uh, chairman. And then I want to recognize Linda Gates, who's also in the room, Mr. Mike Norberg as well, who's part of our coastal management team. Melinda is the interim director, uh, for this initiative. But, uh, by statement, it says now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Oaklusa County as follows. The board designates the week of November's 21st through 28th, 2024 National Estuaries Week locally. The board expresses support for the goals and ideals of nat, uh, Natural Estuaries Week. The board acknowledges the importance of estuaries to sustaining employment in the United States and the economic well-being and prosperity of the United States. The board recognizes that human activities can have significant positive and negative impacts on the quality and productivity of estuary resources. The board applauds the work of national and community organizations and public partners that promote public awareness, understanding, protection and restoration of estuaries. The board supports the scientific study, preservation, protection and restoration of estuaries. And the board expresses the intent of the county to continue working to understand, protect and restore the Choctawatch Bay. to understand, protect and restore the Choctawatch Bay and its watershed. I've been honored to be part of this board for a number of years, seeing the first hand the great work that Melinda and her team have done. I know the comprehensive conservative management plan has been in the works for some time and now it's going into practice. But I applaud you. It's a it's a great asset of Okaloosa County, the grasses, the waterways, the shed itself, the four counties are part of the the team. It's a great one to highlight that. And I just want to thank you for your leadership, Mike, yours as well. Love for y'all to come forward to get a quick photo, if that's okay, to Mr. Chairman. And with that, I'll make the recommended motion.
Motion by Commissioner Ponder?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Ketchel. All in favor, signify with aye?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
If I can make a quick comment, you know, at the end of the day, I get the privilege to come before you guys to request this resolution and dedication for our communities. I was in Holmes County just this morning doing the same thing. I'll be in Walton and Washington County next week doing this this as well, just so that we bring light to the value of our waterways. I personally like to express the story of, you know, Choctawatch Bay is is our heart of our community, right? And when we have dedications like this, this shows the effort that the commission has put forward into preserving our natural ecosystems as well as just knowing that this is a huge driver for both our economy as well as our environment and just our daily life. So thank you for all of your work.
Melinda, thank you.
We had scheduled three public hearings today. We will hear two of them, but we need to begin with establishing the time and date certain for the the flu amendment and the rezoning. I'm not sure. Mr. McInnes, do you mind coming forward? How much of an extension are you asking for? To the next meeting? Okay. Okay, October first, eight thirty in Crestview. Is that suitable?
Yeah, my chairman.
Yes. Motion by Commissioner Ponder. Second by Commissioner Goodwin. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with aye?
Aye.
All right, see you at the next meeting. The next public hearing is to consider a proposed resolution imposing non-adverberium special assessments on local private hospitals. Mr. Hoffstad?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is a continuation of item that was brought before the board at the last meeting whereby the hospitals have approached the BCC asking for a special assessment to be placed on their hospitals. That assessment will be collected and thereby remitted through the state to try and recapture some of the federal Medicaid dollars that do not flow back into Florida. But this is a mechanism whereby that can be done. The board approved an ordinance at the last meeting that set the first step in this process. The second step is a resolution which enables us to provide that assessment directly to the hospitals and start recouping those funds. That's a general summary of it. Certainly Lynn's here to speak to any legal issues involving this this process. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to her.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Only thing I'll add is that in your agenda materials, you will see the three releases executed by all three of the local private hospitals that will have the special assessments imposed on them if approved by the board. Mike Poucher is here, general counsel representing the hospitals requesting this special assessment, and he's happy to answer any questions you may have for them.
Thank you. He has submitted a speaker card, but of course is here if if needed. So at this time, we'll close the the public hearing. Commissioners? Sir? I have the only card. Is there anyone else from the public desiring to speak that has not completed a card? Okay. Motion by Commissioner Boils, second by Commissioner Ponder. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. The last public hearings to consider an ordinance governing public camping or sleeping on county property? Staff presentation will be by Ms. Parsons.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and I will try to keep this as brief as possible. Before you today is a proposed ordinance for your consideration that would amend portions of the county code related to public camping and sleeping within county buildings, on its grounds, on its streets, sidewalks, right-of-way and other properties owned by the county. In late March, as you may recall, the governor signed into law chapter twenty-two-four dash eleven of the laws of Florida. The new law, which takes effect on October first of twenty-twenty-four prohibits counties and municipalities from, and I'm quoting this language, authorizing or otherwise allowing public camping and sleeping on public property, but they don't define what authorizing and allowing means. So it's kind of broad and vague at the same time. Public camping and sleeping is defined within the new legislation as lodging or residing overnight. So it would not apply to someone sleeping on the beach for an hour in the middle of the day. And what this new law also does is it creates a new civil action, cause of action for a resident of the county, a business owner or the attorney general to bring a lawsuit for an injunction against a county or municipality that, again, I quote, authorizes or allows public camping or sleeping on public property. The new civil cause of action allows for prevailing party to seek attorney's fees and costs. People can start bringing those causes of action come January first of twenty-twenty-five, even though the prohibition goes into effect in October. So given the new civil cause of action and the broad language that's within this statute that appears to require a proactive solution by counties and municipalities, we have worked on drafting with staff. We've also provided to the sheriff's office the ordinance that's before you today, the intent being to demonstrate that the county is complying with the statutory prohibition and taking action to demonstrate that it's not authorizing or allowing public camping or sleeping on public property. There is an exception for where you have recreational designated camping, and that's within the statute itself as well. At the same time that the new law was being passed, there was a case going before the Supreme Court of the United States called City of Grants Pass, Oregon versus Johnson. That case specifically dealt with a law that is almost identical to the state of Florida law where individuals who were homeless brought that to court to say that, challenging it for being cruel and unusual punishment clause of the Eighth Amendment the lower courts had found in their favor. SCOTUS in late June revised or reversed the lower court's findings and found that public camping laws, such as the ones that Oregon had put in place, don't violate the Eighth Amendment of the United States Constitution. That's why we're bringing it to you so late in the game before this October first deadline due to the fact that we were waiting for the Supreme Court to put a ruling out on that. So once the ruling did come out, we proceeded with the drafting of this ordinance as well as sending it to the sheriff's office in July and August. See if they had any further comments on it. What the ordinance specifically does is you already have some language in your code related to parks and not being able to camp in parks that are not designated for that. We are taking the new language from the statute and we're not changing the substance of what your code currently says on that provision, but we are aligning the terminology that is utilized in it to further align with this statute. In addition to that, we have provided two new sections of the code which would make clear that the county also prohibits public camping and sleeping as defined by both the statute and we put the definitions in the ordinance to on public right-of-ways, in county buildings, on their grounds. We tried to mirror the statutory language as much as possible. In addition to the ordinance that's before you, in your backup for your consideration and in the recommended action is also a drafted letter to the sheriff's office. The letter itself would specifically alert the sheriff's office to the new county code provisions as well as authorize the sheriff's office to take the necessary action to be able to remove persons who are violating these new prohibitions in accordance with chapter eight, ten of the Florida statutes, which is the trespass laws. So with that said, if you have any questions, I just threw a ton at you.
Thank you.
I just. This is interesting as a social worker that's dealt with a lot of homelessness in my lifetime. Especially in Okaloosa County where we do provide one hopeful place, we and many of the churches feed the poor, which also draws homeless to this area. That's another issue, but we do provide shelter for the night. Does this supersede what a municipality has done? Because I know some of the municipalities have laws in place, so will the county ordinance supersede it or how would that work?
The county ordinance will apply in all the unincorporated areas of the county. It won't supersede the municipal ordinances to the extent they put something in place that's in accordance with the statute. However, under this new statute, if you chose to designate a property for public camping and sleeping outside of recreational uses, you could do so by submitting an application to the Department of Children and Families, and there's a whole list of things that you have to do to qualify for that. And you could do it on your behalf or on behalf of a municipality. Municipality can't do it on their own, so that's where the county kind of comes into play as overseeing that. But you have to show that you don't have enough beds in the shelters in the community, that you have certain sanitation requirements, that whatever the property is, is not next to residential property. There's a whole laundry list of items that you would have to show to even qualify for a one-year certification like that.
I think it's a good ordinance because we are really dealing with this problem. In fact, I I've had some conversations with the military base where they've had homeless encampments set up and they had to spend a hundred thousand dollars to mitigate the encampment and to remove the homeless. I understand they need a place to sleep too, but you know, we we are providing that with one hopeful place, so. So it's a real issue and it's ongoing, so you know, I think I think this has some some good merit to it.
Before we go too far with Commissioner questions, let me be sure there's no public comment. I have no speaker cards for this item. Is there anyone from the public desiring to speak to this item? Okay, thank you. So at this time, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioner Goodwin?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I think you might have a public comment.
Changed your mind? Will you push the speak button? Thank you.
Laurie St. Germain, two-one-four Marla Street, excuse me, Elaine Avenue. I'm a little concerned about this and I just came upon this today, so I don't know what the corrective measures are for these, this particular ordinance. I think maybe a lot of places it starts with a citation for the individual or gets to that point. But you know, we already have, there's already a loitering statute in the state of Florida, and that doesn't seem to be utilized by the police department or the sheriff's department very effectively. So I'm just a little concerned that this ordinance, even though it looks great, what is going to be the actual administration of this for the individuals who continue to be on the right-of-way, which in my particular case unfortunately seems to be the majority of the space where they're on as opposed to the property owners' space. So I'm just, again, I'm wanting to know exactly what your procedure will be to address these people, to hopefully get them either help or to get them off the area that they're on. Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, I can address that question. So we baked into the ordinance in each one of the provisions that law enforcement would have the authority to trespass individuals in accordance with the requirements of chapter eight, ten of the Florida statutes. So this goes beyond your code enforcement measures, which would also be available to you, but this would allow for them, and that's why we also put the letter in there to giving the sheriff the go ahead as the property owners to enforce it and go through the eight, ten rules. Under that, they don't have to give a warning, but generally speaking, we usually see a warning for the first time and it escalates from there in terms of trespassing individuals from property. And then it depends misdemeanors, felonies and the likes, depends on the acreage and where it's located and there's a lot of different.
And the warnings with trespassing is that they have to leave.
Correct.
If they don't leave, then the consequences of not leaving is to have it enforced that you were trespassing. So yes, thank you. It gives us an opportunity to have something to use toward public lands where there's been such a debate of whether or not you can force someone to leave from from public lands. So if there's no one else from the public, at this time, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioner Goodwin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll start by saying, I mean, I I think, you know, the state's headed in the right direction with this. Certainly, you know, Okaloosa County has never been a proponent of creating an opportunity for homeless camps, but I think much like many areas of our country, unfortunately, we we end up with them nonetheless. But a couple of questions about how this works first. With regard to right-of-way, specifically probably road right-of-ways, is it, would our ordinance only be effective if it's a right-of-way owned owned by the county? In other words, can we implement this if it's within our geographic boundaries on any public right-of-way?
So the statute specifically says prohibition on county-owned and municipal-owned right-of-ways, streets, parks, you name it, county-owned property. And so we specifically drafted it. We did use the word public, but we also use county-owned buildings, facilities and the likes for purposes of the permissions wanted by the sheriff's office. We specifically put in there county-owned property right-of-ways streets, so I I don't know. I think it's broad enough that it could be other public right-of-ways and alleyways and the likes. However, for purposes of the permission we're giving, it's limited to the county right-of-ways and the county properties, the buildings, the grounds, parks, parking areas and facilities.
And I'll tell you why I'm asking. I think a lot or some of the problem exists in state road right-of-way, particularly under bridges that are owned and maintained by the state of Florida. So it's not necessarily the county's right-of-way, but I think if we don't address it, I mean, you know, you know, if you squeeze the problem, it just goes over to the other side, right? And I mean, and that's that that's really an issue that I think we need to to deal with and and the reason, you know, I say that is I'd be in favor of broadening it to cover those areas. But I feel like we're also kind of piercing into this nuanced area of law between where property rights and criminal law kind of overlap and maybe intersect. So would are is what we're doing creating a policy about where we where we are defining when something is a trespass to our property? Or are we exercising police power in regulating behavior?
Exercising police power and regulating behavior, not status of an individual, but the behavior of an individual is how at least it's been interpreted by the Supreme Court actually in these matters for these types of laws that go into place, including the Oregon law that just was passed.
So for, and I apologize for dragging this out, but I just want to understand the mechanics of it. So for instance, with giving the sheriff the letter and consent to enforce the no trespass. I I mean, I could understand how that could work even for a private property owner with regard to their own private property. But to the extent that we make it a regulatory issue and prohibit it, say like for instance in a state road right-of-way. But to the extent that we make it a regulatory issue and prohibit it, say like for instance, in a state road right-of-way. You know, I, it, it, how does that work? Because we're not giving the sheriff consent to trespass somebody from our property, but we're just basically doing, I guess, is asking the sheriff to enforce the law, right? On that issue, is that effective?
So from my limited experience with this, uh, the sheriff's office will require like consent from the property owner in order to, they need, they need an affidavit, a something from the property owner to say that that person does not have permission to stay there.
So in that case, the state, we could regulate in that case, but then the state would have to actually give the go-ahead for the sheriff's officer to trespass.
That's the weird thing about this intersection. Cause it seems if you take any other regular, regulated behavior, say you just make something up, it's illegal to possess frisbees in, in Okaloosa County. Somebody steps on a piece of private property and possesses an illegal frisbee. And I'm using this as an extreme example for illustration only. Right, yeah. He may have been hit by one, I have. But, um, you know, for instance, you know, in that, in that circumstance, right? The property owner's permission to possess the frisbee is irrelevant to the, to the commission of a crime for which law enforcement could enforce. It, it seems to me like we're, I, I'm unclear. Are we, are we talking about something where a property owner could give permission? In other words, if we prohibited camping in a state right-of-way, without legislative action, I mean, could the right-of-way owner just come in and say, well, but we give permission for it. So it's unenforceable.
Specifically with chapter eight, 10 and the requirements under that, I do think they would still have to get permission. Um, I don't think we could override those as a county for that purpose. Um, the statute itself, I did just pull it open, does specifically say public right-of-way under the jurisdiction of the county or municipality. Jurisdiction wise, there's always questions whether or not what we can do with in the state right-of-way and what we can't. But I do believe that the state right-of-way is within our jurisdiction and we are able to do other things with it. So conceptually, someone could be trespassed from it. I don't know whether or not for an enforcement standpoint, the law enforcement will take that action. Whether or not it's on the books in terms, uh, without the state's permission.
If I may, yeah. There's separate statutes for those areas. So the, the right-of-way of an interstate has separate statute for people, uh, sleeping there, camping there, entering there. Bridges have a separate statute, sidewalks have a separate statute. I, I, I think some of those state properties are already covered under different mechanisms of enforcement. And, and maybe that's why the narrowed scope of keeping this to the county.
And, and, and that may be true. And again, you know, I'm just trying to understand the mechanics of it. And the reason I'm getting to that is I think it's a good move. I think we should go forward with it. I, I, I think I, I'd be willing to go a little bit further even than the draft says. Then it comes down to the exact question that was asked during public comment. How is it going to be enforced? And in part, I mean, I think I can answer part of that. It's going to come down to funding, uh, to enforce it. So to, to make this work and to be effective, other than just a feel-good measure, it's going to require money. Uh, we're going to have to make sure that the sheriff has resources to enforce it as well as our code enforcement staff. Um, so it will cost public dollars to enforce it. And when it's enforced, it will cost more public dollars because once somebody has refused to move and they've now created violated the, the law and committed a crime, they're going to get taken to the Okaloosa County Correctional Facility. Where again, the taxpayers are going to pay for that. So it's going to cost public dollars no matter what. It's a question of is the impact by not having it on our citizens great enough that it justifies using those public expenditures? I think it probably does. I'm in favor of it. We can probably, you know, work through some of the mechanics of this and it, and my guess is at some point we may even have to tweak this and and update it, but I think it's a pretty good start. I appreciate you explaining it to me. I would be in favor of going, like I said, a little bit further and just saying, you know, within our jurisdictional boundaries and making it broad. But again, we may have to, if we do that, we may have to have some meetings with FDOT and ask for them to give us some sort of consent letter and probably agree to cover the cost of all enforcement and all those sorts of things. But I think we could probably work through it.
And in terms of funding, also Florida's Council on Homelessness, um, came out with a study earlier in June and specifically submitted to the legislature with requests for different funding mechanisms for these types of enforcement, as well as more affordable housing. And to try to open up, um, one of their examples is ship funding for, um, additional uses. But whether or not any of that, what gets passed or looked at by the legislature, um, it's up in the air, but it was submitted to them for their consideration this year.
Mr. Boils? I, I just want to make sure that this, if we adopt this, this is not going to interfere with the chairman's afternoon nap at Bracken Street Building. I just want to make sure.
It, it will not. Afternoon naps are okay. It's overnighting.
That's, that's good. Okay. I was worried. Um, no, so in all seriousness, this we, we have, I want to be sure I'm clear. We have had the authority to adopt an ordinance, uh, in this form and fashion since forever. And so we're not doing this because there's been some instantaneous need in Okaloosa County to adopt an ordinance in this fashion. Frankly, what we're doing is protecting our county from probably basis litigation that will be spurred by this legislation that was adopted by, um, our esteemed legislature in an attempt to effectively govern our county and our cities from Tallahassee. And so it does kind of beg the question. If the legislature could do a better job, why don't they just dissolve us all and take over and, and, and run the state statewide from Tallahassee? It would save us all the trouble of, of being here. So we're gonna adopt this thing because it's necessary and appropriate to protect our county from that unwarranted legislation. And I'm not even saying the, the fundamentals of the, of the ordinance are bad, just that if we had a significant enough problem, I think we're all sufficiently capable of making the appropriate decisions and then legislating and, and regulating our county appropriately, uh, without need to do so with a pitchfork at our back from our friends in the legislature. And so there may be a problem somewhere else in the state that warrants, um, this type of heavy-ended preemption from the legislature. I frankly don't believe we have it here. Uh, I'll vote for it again because it's simply a preemptive measure to attempt to be in compliance and avoid, uh, unnecessary litigation that would be a distraction for our county. And here we are in the world terms.
What it also does, it, as legislature is creates an opportunity for counties to open public camping sites, which I'm grateful. We are absolutely not doing that. If, if we were to discuss homelessness as we're doing, I'm of the opinion, learning last week that we have over a hundred and twenty funded homeless beds in Okaloosa County, that's too many. Uh, we shouldn't be in the business of trying to, uh, attract and house the homeless. We should be in the business of trying to help them get out of homelessness. Uh, the ones that choose to, to stay there, a whole nother discussion. But there's opportunities that are out there for people to be able to, to take and move forward. But I, I think we have so many entities working against each other right now, kind of competing for the same dollar to see who gets to, uh, in quotes, help the most. So there's some, some struggles there that, um, that need to be worked out at some point.
So I have to agree with what Commissioner Boyle said earlier, especially like we just did this thing with private hospitals. It should have been done on a state level and they threw it down to the county. And of course we're going to help, but when it comes to this, one of my concerns is let's just say, for instance, Okaloosa doesn't enforce, doesn't have this on the books and Santa Rosa and Walton does, so send them to Okaloosa. We almost all have to enforce this. We almost have to take this. And I agree with you, Chairman, that unfortunately, I have to be careful how I say this because I don't want to be quoted like they're eating cats and dogs like the president was. But, you know, it's unfortunate that our groups don't work together that are serving the homeless in a better way, to not enable homelessness, but to get them out of homelessness. By getting them employed and getting them into jobs and getting them their resumes built. And, and that's the issue. It's, it's you know, this is not, this shouldn't be a way of life. And I know there's probably one-third that could get a job today, one-third that with some training could get a job. This is making it very simple. And one-third that we will have to take care of as a society because they're mentally ill or whatever. But it's, it's frustrating. It's very, very frustrating. And I feel like sometimes we enable this too much. Oh, take care of the homeless, feed them, clothe them, you know, that's not what we're called to do. We're called to, to help them get out of homelessness, you know, that old adage, teach them to fish, not give them a fish.
Commissioner Goodwin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't want to take a second bite. Somebody else has something first, but I did want to ask this. So has there been an effort to, I'm assuming the cities, the municipalities are taking this up as well? Within Okaloosa County, has there been an effort to try and you know, uh, kind of have some consistency or uniformity in the way that this ordinance will work? So that, um, regardless if you're in and out of a city jurisdiction or county jurisdiction, one for law enforcement, the, the rules of the game are the same. And then, um, and then the second, i- if we haven't done that, I would actually, you know, ask that we make that effort. The second component of that is I am aware that some municipalities have, um, been working on trying to come up with a uniform panhandling ordinance. Uh, and I'm using that over broad. There's probably different terms, but I'll call it panhandling because I want to be honest with you. I think the panhandling enables in a large way, some of this homelessness and, um, you know, it, it, coming up with a uniform way of dealing with that would be, uh, you know, very important, I think, to make this effective. So I don't know if we have formally engaged with legal counsel from the municipalities on that, but if we haven't, I don't know if we can get consensus to do that, but I would love to have our legal, our legal team meet with the legal teams of our, of our municipalities in Okaloosa County and try to get that rolling. Cause I mean, th- these two things need to work together. And, and we do need to do something. I mean, I've got, I've got medians in my district that have ruts down the middle of them. And they're only there because people are handing out dollars thinking they're doing the right thing. But ultimately they're making the problem worse. And we got to come up with a way to deal with it. So.
And I have not reached out to the other, uh, city attorneys in the municipalities here on this particular ordinance. I'm happy to do so. I'll reach out to them by tomorrow, uh, and talk to them about it. They will also have to put a prohibition in place, or at least they can't allow it under this new law, but we can talk about, um, enforcement with them as well, um, to ensure it's uniform. And there has been a trend, kind of started east, it's coming west for new ordinances related to panhandling. So I can definitely talk to them about that, what has worked, what hasn't worked with some of them that put them in place within the last year. Uh, and some of the trends that we're seeing.
That would be great, at least from my perspective. If we could come back, and I don't know by the next meeting or, you know, maybe the next two meetings. If, you know, if your team could kind of report back on what you find, cause honestly, I think the most effective way to do it is if you had a, a, a county-wide uniform ordinance for both issues that work together. Because that way, you know, the sheriff's deputies are going to know what's the rules here, what's the rules there. Of course deputies have county-wide jurisdiction, doesn't matter if they're in a city or not. And then, you know, for the, uh, city law enforcement, they'd be enforcing the same set of rules. It would just make things so much cleaner, I think, but if we could get there.
Thank you. It's been great discussion. Would anyone like to make a motion? Mr. Ketchel made a motion. Is there a second?
Second, my Commissioner Ponder.
We need to add the part that Commissioner Goodwin suggested about coordinating with the other municipalities.
Can I ask a question about that?
We, we got that direction.
Could I ask a question about that though? If, does this take one or two readings? One, if we were to pass it today and make any changes to synthesize our ordinance with others, then we would have to basically set a new public hearing, right? Is there any utility in, um, continuing to a date certain, allowing you to have the conversations and come back? Or is that just create the process?
The prohibition goes into place under state statute October first. That's why we're bringing it to you now. The actions itself don't go into effect till January first, um, which is why we brought the ordinance was evidence and proof if someone were to bring a civil action against you all. But the technically the prohibition comes up October first.
So we need to move forward?
I would recommend it. We could always bring it back if anything needed to change.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman? Uh, is it, and just, uh, if I'm understanding you, Commissioner Goodwin, you're really now kind of focused on the panhandling side of things, uh, with regard to uniformity of, of ordinance as opposed to the sleeping side of things, right?
Well, both. Um, I've got both going on. Those, uh, ruts in the road aren't that far away from the tents.
Fair, fair enough. Um, I mean, I think, uh, 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 my take on the, on the, on the sleeping ordinance issue is it's somewhat separate and apart from the panhandling issue. And I, I certainly see the, the, you know, the interest in, um, uniformity if possible relative to the panhandling ordinance on the, the sleeping ordinance, when you talk about nine municipalities and how they're going to react to legislation, you know, gun at our back type of thing. I don't know that, I think we get ours done and there's certainly I, I would expect a, an extended conversation on the, on the coordination side of things on the, on the panhandling side, which I don't necessarily oppose. But I would just say keep those distinct is all.
Mr. Ponder?
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate it. Uh, just a quick query. Just, you said it earlier, just for my own clarification that the enforcement side of this thing is the sheriff's department, we're sending them a letter, it's going to be, hey, we're going to give them some encouragement to, to, to leave and then they'll start enforcing some things. So the first would be kind of a warning.
So under
Unless it's a repeat.
Chapter eight, 10, um, which is the various trespassing ordinance through our various trespassing laws. They don't require a warning, but generally speaking, and anytime you've trespassed someone from public property, they give a warning first. And then if they don't move, that's when it starts to escalate from there.
I will also mention that, um, just as recently as like a, a week or two ago, we did have someone who was sleeping on county property. And, um, even before this ordinance, what the sheriff's office did is they initially sent their community resource officer, so kind of a softer, gentler approach to, you know, speak to the individual, ask them to, to move. Um, and, and if they refuse, then the sheriff's office would then issue a trespass. And so I suspect that's, that's what would happen now. And so with trespass, there is inherently a warning, but it, it doesn't, it doesn't unlike code enforcement, it's not like a note, you know, like a seven-day notice. You could give the warning, ask them to move. And if they don't, you could issue the trespass.
I know we're kind of wearing this subject now, Chairman, but I'm just going to say one thing. Americans have such a big heart. They want to help. They see somebody on the side of the road that they just, you know, automatically reach in and give money. Somehow we've got to get that across. This is, that money will go for alcohol, drugs. It's not to provide for a family. And, or I don't know whether QR codes or some way of educating people, please give to the charities, let them do the casework. Let them decide where this money needs to go. But the two are kind of linked because when we have a high tourist season here, we have more homeless. Why? Because they panhandle here, because they know they can get more money. They know which corners to stand on. Many of them are in your district. And so I, it is linked and we need to continue to work on this problem to solve it because that's, we don't want to draw this in. And, you know, Jesus said it himself, the poor are always with us, but there are many services here to help the poor if they truly want to get out of this.
Just to, just to be clear, so we have a motion and a second. Does the motion include the idea of legal coming back to us? Or is that just consensus? Okay, so you have the consensus for that. Great. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor, signify with a I? All right, passes unanimously.
Good thing, cause I was about to fall asleep, but it was going so long.
It's effective now.
That was the joke.
Had to explain the joke. Uh, Mr. Hackett?
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Mr. Chairman, uh, I'm here to request the board approve this contract with J and P Construction Company for forty-one million, five hundred and seventy thousand for the construction of the Shoal River Ranch Water Reclamation Facility. That number also includes a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar contingency. That contingency is solely for the county to, uh, cover any unanticipated costs during construction. It's not uncommon for a project of this size and this complexity. The, the, uh, I think it's important to note that, that this particular project, uh, through J and P, this is a contractor that we've used before on many projects, large-scale projects, and we have a really good relationship with them. I think it's also important to note that during the bid, their bid was about three million less than the, the second bidder. So I think that's important. The, the competitive bid project, process worked and we feel like we have a good price for this. project process worked, and we feel like we have a good price for this project. The facility will initially be built as a 1.25 MGD plant with the ability to produce reuse water. It will also be expandable up to 10 million MGD. Fortunately, we have a 20 acre site to work with and grow with. In addition, we also have other land available for future rib installations to accommodate 10 MGD. Per the contract, the work would be substantially completed in 710 days, but would allow for an additional 90 days for final completion. We plan to issue a notice to proceed sometime in October, with the actual construction occurring two to three months later. We're issuing the NTP because this project would definitely have some long lead time items. And it will give the contractor the time to go ahead and do that. Gives us also time to complete some of our sub projects that we are working on. Approximately 28 million has been grant funded to this point through ARPA, Restore Pot One, and a $7 million state appropriation. I'd like to congratulate the team, which would include our deputy director, Mark Wise, purchasing department, legal department, grants, they've all worked amazingly well together. In addition, the deputy county administrator, Mr. Coffey, he's been a huge help as well. The in-house crew sub projects approved by the board on August 20th are proceeding very well. In fact, we should have the water main and force main along Jericho Road installed this month, as well as the construction of the site access road. This plant has been a long time in the making. And it's, it's a very important plant, a very important plant. I want to applaud the board's foresight for, for approving this action, for, for having this project, which is going to be so critical for industrial and residential growth in the future for the county. I think even from an environmental standpoint, this project will allow us to be less reliant on septic systems for future growth. So it has a lot of win wins associated with it. Plus, I think it was the, the right design and the right way to do it, with the ability to expand at a 2.5 MGD, five, and then 10 MGD. We can be ready for growth when it comes. And though it, it might be to some, it seems maybe the, the project cost is high. In actuality, it will, it will be so much less expensive in the future for those additional expansions. In the end, I think it's all going to even out. And it's really, I believe, going to prove to be a great asset for the county. Very excited about it. And we're ready to get started. I don't have anything else at the moment, but I'll be happy to take any questions you have.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir. You're certainly excited about this project. It has been a long time in coming. I think that it's, you know, it's the county leaning forward. But I think when you, you know, you talk about some of the growth pressures in the north end and, and how, you know, what we're hearing from constituents about how they want us to, want to see us grow, you know, the right way, not the wrong way. Sewer capacity allows for density, density in the right places, so that you're not consuming all of your, all of your land is, is, I think, the right way to do it at the end of the day. And so we need to stay ahead of that. You know, when you're staying ahead of things, sometimes you're going to have people that, you know, they're going to point their finger and go, why are you building that now? Those are the same folks that would be pointing their finger in 10 years and going, why didn't you build that 10 years ago? And so it's just something that's hard decisions that we have to make. I do have one nitpick item, and I apologize for not getting my staff for this ahead of time, though frankly, I think it's kind of a policy issue for the commission. I still don't think we're, we are where we need to be with regard to liquidated damages for contract time overruns. And so if I saw in the documents correctly, it's proposed at $250 a day.
$250.
On a 41-ish, $42 million construction project. So that would equate to, if the, if the contractor took below the construction schedule by an entire year, their liquidated damages would be less than $100,000, right? Someone else has done the math. And I'll just tell you, as a business person, I shrug my shoulders and go, on a $41 million contract, if I need to buy myself an extra year to, to, to complete performance, drop in the bucket, not even going to think about 250 bucks a day. So it is not going to motivate the behavior that we want to see with regard to ensuring timely compliance. That may well not be a problem on this project. I'm just kind of working from current experience relative to other large construction projects in the county, noting that we had two time extensions that we approved on the consent agenda today relative to transportation projects. And I'm just a little bit over continuing to do that repetitively. And so if there's room within the process commissioners, Howard suggested we go ahead and take action now to up that, and then submit it back to that contractor. And they can either take it or leave it. I don't know what the formula needs to be. I kind of thought we were working towards getting to a formula that was relative to the contract size value. Clearly, we're not there. Or if we are, and we have a formula that allows for $250 a day on a $42 million project, then I think our formula is still off. So.
Well, you do bring up a good point as a contractor. But, but what is that number? If, if you're looking at a $41 million project, and depending upon who the contractor is, is that number a million dollars over a year? And if, I think a year is a great time to use. So in this case, it would be 100,000. But at what point in time do we end up on a point where a contractor might walk away? And there's plenty of contractors that would be just fine if they did. However, J and P, as they, they did the Island Booster Force, the JD Mitchum Plant, they just finished our solids expansion facility. I think part of why this is where it's at is because we've had such a good longstanding relationship with J and P. Moving forward in the future, I'm all for trying to, to develop a formula that, that everyone can feel comfortable with. It's not too punitive, but is motivating enough to get done what we need to get done. However, given all that is having to take place and be coordinated, I would hate to see this $250 a day that might go to 500, might go to 750, and may or may not be a motivating factor in the end, if it comes to it, impede us moving forward with it. I just wanted to put that forward.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval with an amendment of $1,000 a day liquidated damages for time overruns. My gut inclination is this contractor is good at what they do, and they're going to be completely comfortable with that. And I'll ask for consensus from the board to direct staff to bring back a proposed unified policy for countywide procurements relative to how we calculate liquidated damages in the future.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Ponder. Commissioner Ponder?
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate it. I was going to do 1250, but that'd be 456. But uh.
I'll accept the amendment.
A thousand is fine. That's 365,000. I want to compliment you and your staff, Mr. Wise, everyone bringing this project. It's been a long time coming. Mr. Coffey, your team as well, those on, John, whoever's on the team that did this. Many parts, it took time, took wisdom and counsel, teams coming together, funding was such a big thing. And that's the part where it's a big number, but y'all methodically looked at this thing. You knocked on the right doors, you asked the right questions. Our state representative, Pat Maney, outstanding teammate on this project as well, Senator Roxton, Senator Trumbull. We're very grateful to have our legislative support. And so I just want to compliment y'all that at the end of the day, it, the number is a big number, but there's a lot of, a lot of funding sources are coming in to make it happen. But it's, it's, it's a great win. I just want to, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to compliment y'all on putting together an amazing project.
Thank you, sir.
Need further discussion? So, sure. Sure. Okay. All in favor, signify with a aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Coffey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I'm going to try and be brief today, realizing your next meeting, but I still want to cover this area. First, before I even start, I want to say thank you for the last item. Staff really appreciate your support. It is my pleasure to present this item to you today. And I'll say that it's a long time in coming as well. So I feel like we've been hitting a big, bunch of big milestones today. And it's always great when you have a meeting like that. And this is another one of them. This is something that we've been working on for several years. And in my staff report, I talked about the property was for sale, the property wasn't for sale, property's for sale. As we know, persistence sometimes works. And we, I don't know if I wore the property owner down, but we were able to work with them and, and we've come to a, a deal today. So.
You wore me down.
So, location wise, this is approximately where it is. It's Western Crestview. It's really south, just south of Baker, and it's in and around the Baker Arena. And I'm going to flash through that. The Baker Arena, we have a 51 acre parcel there, relatively odd shaped, causes different issues as far as parking, drainage, whatnot, that we can't, it's usable. But again, it's, it's not really functional because of the shape a little bit. This is some of the other properties in and around Baker that we own. So you'll see that, and you'll see the property I'm going to talk about today. This is the property, 297 acres. And the purchase price, combining the two purchase agreements is 6.051 million. And I'll talk about that in a little bit, too. So this is how it will tie in with our other county properties. And this is why it's so critical. You've, you've essentially created a mass between the 51 acres, 297 acres, and then even portions of the landfill that you may be able to utilize and roll in. That's not really part of the old landfill that could be carved off or worked in. And I think there's some synergies there even because even with our landfill property, we've had iron issues going west, eastward as well. So we may be able to work through some of those issues as well. But you're going to have, what you have here is essentially a large, massive public property that will do great things for our community. Some of the property features, so let me go over those real quick. I just talked to you about interconnected with other county properties. There are 87 acres cleared. And then there's large patches of mature trees. So you got the best of both worlds there. So the large clearing allows you to use, utilize that property. It's already being utilized for some of that. And I'll talk about that in a second. There are several small lakes on the property, which are really cool. And they're in several locations, as you can see from the pictures in the backup. And Mill Creek runs through the property, which is great as well. There's access to Highway 189. And also on the property, there's an event barn with, it's a lot of character and seats 200. And you could go to www.campertreat.net, and you can see a lot of cool pictures, a lot of cool things happening in that barn. So it has a lot of potential for a lot of future things. And those, there's a lot of weddings, stuff that happens there, but there's also Christmas parties, family reunions, and other type of events that gather in that barn. And it's really a cool place to be. There are several other pole barns, the small buildings, and there are also three large cabins, the docks in the water. And I'm going to show you some of that. So this is some pictures that were taken from this morning. And this is the entrance as you come through the wooded area. If you can see the backup that I've given you. And as you come into the open area, the picture on the right is kind of the wedding location where you actually get married right down by the water, which is real, kind of cool thing to do. And apparently, there were 50 weddings there last year, just to show you. This is some of the barns and outbuilding. And the biggest barn is the top right. And that's where they actually have receptions and, and events and stuff like that. Some of the others are more pole barns and stuff like that, that we can use in overall maintenance and upkeep of the property. To the right is the barn, you can see that. And to the left is the pole barn. So you're, you're kind of looking right between that, just south of that biggest barn that you're looking at right there. Okay, next one. There's three cottages, and they're kind of hard to make through the woods there. But if you go to their GAS, you can make those out. And there's some pictures of those right there. And they have docks in the water. If you go online, two of them are used right now for part of the bridal parties, groom's party, changing and stuff ahead of the wedding. And they go on there right now. These are some potential uses of property. Again, they're just all kinds of, they're just uses. They're just a list right now. The goal would be to engage a bunch of different user groups, ranging from BARA to cross-country coaches in the county, to some of the 4H and FAA folks, and any other folks we can engage and kind of come up with a conceptual master plan to, to present and discuss. And that will be a process that we work through. This is a different thing as far as what, we talk about potential uses, but I think we also should talk about potential uses that won't occur on the property. So this is a sketch of 258 lots. This essentially meets our zoning code now. As you know, we've had a lot of interesting discussion in Baker about growth. And buying this property would not only allow a lot of great things to happen, it would allow some other things that people might perceive as not so great things to not happen. So that is a big plus on the opposite side of the spectrum there. Funding wise, I, I've got 6,081,000. We will have some closing costs. There might be some initial improvements cleanup. So we've got some money set aside for that. And the conceptual master planning, we would go right into that. Some other items that were on your agenda today was essentially the stormwater. We're working on doing that for, up at the BARA Arena right now. Stormwater is a major issue. And it's part of solving some of those underlying issues to make it a true venue capable of sporting a lot of great things. This would require some, some financing. We have talked to a couple sources right now. I think that can move relatively quick. We're looking at under 5% right now. According to the folks, we've had preliminary discussions. We do under five years, under 5%. And probably a minimal, minimal amount of issuance costs because you either use a bank, FLGFC, that name is spelled out in your packet. Don't ask me to repeat it here because I will mess it up. So, but. Some of the timelines, I won't bore you with all those details, but it's the normal stuff we go through between appraisals. TDC will be doing retroactively going back. Due diligence, we have to October 20th. Closing honor before October 31st. And we will close the properties together. There's two, it'd be two different closings altogether. I know I rushed through that. I don't entertain any questions or go into greater detail, wherever you'd like.
Thank you, Greg. I appreciate it. Mr. Chairman, certainly commissioners in my district, I, you know, certainly hope we have support for this today. And I appreciate the commission being willing to consider an action like this. I think, you know, this kind of has a, 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 a long history that really goes back to the, the citizens agreeing to expand the bed tax district. And so that vote was required before these dollars could begin to be collected in the north end. And as we talked about, you know, back at that point in time, we couldn't spend them in the north end unless and until we expanded that bed taxing district. And so, you know, even setting aside the development kind of pressure issues that are coming out of that community right now, you had the kind of historic arguments about the traffic issue. So for a significant portion of the year, you have a lot of traffic, and it's increasing every year, coming down 189, and then coming through Baker, down to Highway 90. And that's something folks that live in that area just have to endure or deal with. And it's just a part of the deal. And quite frankly, you know, many of them are not connected to the tourism industry and aren't really getting any benefit out of, out of that kind of burden. And so, you know, these types of acquisitions that are smartly targeted towards, I think, properties that can have a really complementary use to the county's existing infrastructure, but also provide great recreational opportunities for local folks who live here, while, you know, kind of supercharging our tourism industry within the north end to, you know, kind of meet that nexus with the funding source, is absolutely the right type of acquisitions and the ones that we need to be looking toward. The fact that a acquisition like this has an ancillary benefit of perpetually preserving some additional open space, and taking development pressure off the table and doing it, you know, quite frankly, in the right way, which is not, you know, regulating, regulating away property owner rights, but rather as a community, kind of collectively deciding where we want to focus our resources, I think is the right way to do it. We can't do this with every property. And so we, I have to be careful. There are limitations there. But certainly, I think within, within my district and within this community in particular, I, I see significant upsides to, to making this acquisition. Obviously, you know, the purchase price and all that have been vetted through the appraisal process. And so I think we're, you know, are we, are we paying more than I'd like to, of course? But quite frankly, the real estate market's different than it was two, two years ago, five years ago. And it just, you know, I don't think we're going to see valuations like we saw in the recent past. And so we have to kind of adapt to, to, to the current market as we, as we find it. And so with that long statement, commissioners, I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Ketchel. Any further discussion?
I just want to say that I'm really excited about this, as I was when we acquired the fairgrounds. I mean, this is a no brainer, in my opinion. Very excited for this property acquisition by the county. They're not making more land. And I think we'll look back on this and think, what a smart move this was.
Commissioner Goodwin?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll certainly support this. I think Commissioner Boyle has already pointed out, you know, a couple of the, the things that really struck me is significant about this. One, the expanded bed tax, the opportunity to use those tourism-generated dollars for a benefit that will be back, you know, be realized by our community as well. And so that was a, you know, I think a mandate from the citizens. And so I'm happy that we're proceeding on these different opportunities in that way. And then two, and then two, you know, this concept of you being able to preserve property and open space through, um, you know, strategic acquisitions, I think is really important. So I, I really, um, applaud the effort going forward in that way. I think it's a good thing. The only thing I want to kind of be cautious about and, and just make clear, and Craig, I know you and I've talked about this, is that this is not something that will be used to compete with, um, private businesses or competing businesses. Um, the county's not gonna get into, say, for instance, the, uh, you know, the wedding venue business. Um, I mean, obviously we permit weddings, uh, through vendors on our beaches. They go through a process, but, but we're not running county setups and things like that. Um, could you just speak to that? Cause I, I just want to make sure that, that, you know, that our, you know, our stakeholders in our community that are involved and, and that may see this as, hey, is the county getting in, you know, into the business? I, I, I understand that's not what we're doing, but if you could just kind of speak to that a little bit.
Thank you, sir. And I forgot to mention that, uh, go into a little bit more detail. I know I did in the staff report, but, uh, there is an existing, uh, venue there, that existing wedding provider, and I, I gave the website actually. Uh, so we have in the agreement, uh, they, they already had weddings booked into two thousand twenty-five, so we honored that and, and, uh, what we wanted to do, we, we actually view that as we didn't want to put that wedding vendor out of business. Uh, we didn't want to be in the wedding business ourselves. So, uh, we actually have the opportunity to continue that for up to the next five years to continue those type of weddings should we choose. It's year by year is what we've got in the agreement. Um, and, and the idea is that is a tourism event. People don't think about that and that is one of our major pushes in tourism. Uh, we have some great wedding venues on the North End. Actually, we actually have three cool ones. Uh, uh, Lower Hill has one. There's another one nearby even here, uh, and, and, uh, there's at least three or four I know of. So that is gonna be our major tourism push and we're really trying to promote those private, uh, folks doing it. What we didn't want to do is buy it and, and government shut it down and have it go away when, when there's a successful business there. We want to just, uh, we support that as well as all vendors. Um, the second thing as far as competing or not, there, um, camping wise, there are, if you, we are getting ready to take over Barra. There's about thirty-six R V sites there that are already used for, uh, in conjunction with the shows and those trailers, that horse trailers today aren't like your grandfather's horse trailers. They have, uh, full kitchens and R Vs and stuff like that. And then they carry horses and back. So we would continue to operate those and these three cottages, we would probably continue to do those. Beyond that, we would have to figure that out, bring it before the board and stuff like that. But the intent's not to compete with any, uh, private businesses. And I don't know of any other, uh, camping or R Vs that are in this area, but, uh, so.
Thanks for addressing that. So I, I, I certainly support, move forward.
Commissioner Walls?
Uh, so it is, Commissioner Goodwin, I appreciate you mentioning that. I, I fully concur. I think, you know, I'm not gonna be on this board as this kind of the ultimate development of this property occurs in its, in its final, final iteration. What I would say is what I hope will happen is that there'll be a master planning process that's careful and thoughtful. Uh, and I think that, you know, when you talk about that nexus back to the benefit of the local community, one of the ways that can occur is through, as you master plan a property like this out, um, developing, um, concession air opportunities, uh, for the particular services that are going to be provided that are complimentary to the tourism industry. And then allowing through competitive procurement, um, you know, hopefully local entities can rise to the top and then so you're creating that additional economic benefit, um, in addition to the heads and beds that are coming from the opportunities for someone to start a small business or grow their small business in North, North Okaloosa County by, you know, whether it's, you know, operating a campground or operating a wedding venue or whatever those additional opportunities may be. I think that's, you know, if I kind of understand the big picture purpose of, of the bed tax and, and the investment of those dollars, it's to, to kind of spread that, um, uh, spread that wealth as, as far as possible within the community so that, um, everybody has a chance to prosper. So.
We have a motion and did you have something else, Mr. Col? No, I was gonna say that there are, uh, to this point, there, even the wedding vendor, there are additional caterers or additional, uh, uh, other vendors, three or four other vendors that support the wedding venue vendor that are local companies and businesses and stuff like that. And, uh, if you get into the, uh, arena and making that a more viable place, that's gonna balloon all those, uh, business opportunities for, for people to participate. So. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with a aye. And it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Autry?
Good afternoon. According to the agenda, I'm Jason Autry, the Public Rocks Director. Glad to be here. We have one item for consideration, uh, today. This is the purchase of a parcel of land that's related to a, a very exciting widening project on State Route eighty-five. Uh, the county is working on acquiring stormwater parcels for the widening of eighty-five to get to six lanes. This is the first parcel and I gotta tell you, we've had a, a wonderful property owner, which is, um, that owns this parcel. They've agreed to a, a, a deal that's sort of a donation and a purchase agreement. So we're buying the property for a requested price of eight hundred ninety thousand dollars. The valuation is up closer to, uh, one point five million dollars if memory serves, one point five, six million dollars. So they're giving a donation to the county as well. The beautiful part about this is it serves as a stormwater parcel that the county will utilize and more importantly, the state's going to need in order to widen State Route eighty-five. This is a project that is approved through the Surtax program. So the funding for this comes from our Surtax. It's been allocated. Uh, there's a budget transfer associated with this, but we are requesting approval to purchase this property and execute the donation agreement with the, uh, property owner for stormwater purposes.
I will gladly move approval, um, needed, needed project and just a a, a further testament to the, the way we're doing things uniquely here in Okaloosa County and our partnership with D O T to, um, help them help us, um,
Absolutely.
make, 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 uh, traffic capacity better. So thanks, thanks, Jason, to you and your team.
Thank you.
Motion by Commissioner Boils, a second by Commissioner Ponder. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with a aye. That passes unanimously. Thank you. This time we'll complete our final public comment. Does anyone from the public desire to speak?
No.
Laurie St. Germain, four two one, Elaine Avenue. Um, I wanted to continue with my crime issue with, uh, Sylvania Heights. Uh, one individual in particular, his name is, um, Derek Lamont Pew. Um, he began his crime spree at the age of nineteen. He's now forty-four. He has been arrested twenty-seven times in Okaloosa County. And it seems that, uh, he seems to be on the judicial carousel because, uh, twenty-seven arrests is, uh, nothing to be proud of in my book, but apparently it is. Uh, he doesn't seem to have any, uh, work skills except into breaking into people's property and stealing things and selling them for his, uh, preferred choice of whatever recreational drugs he chooses. Uh, the second issue is, uh, ironically, I happen to purchase two pieces of property in this area. And the second one, uh, the sheriff's department actually arrested the meth dealer, um, last year in February. And that individual ended up getting eighteen years, uh, a repeat offense, but his next course of housing is eighteen years in the federal pen. Um, but the concern about that is I tried to investigate that and found out that, um, he actually, the sheriff's department actually arrested him. But it was, the housing for him was done in the city of Fort Walton. And when I tried to find out about the city of Fort Walton and this arrest, they had no record of it at all. So that makes the city of Fort Walton look very, very pristine in the drug, uh, arrest arena. And I want to know why that does not appear in the city of Fort Walton's records so that when people who come to there know that what is actually participating there. So that seems to be, and they also ended up using my property in the city of Fort Walton for the arrest because, um, they tell me that the surveillance was not used from my property, but unfortunately it was. So I did not know of that at the time, but I've subsequently established that. So there's a whole myriad of things that need to be addressed here. Um, and again, I would like to see, uh, Sylvania Heights get some pristine attention from this municipality. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public desiring to speak?
You'll need to unlock your iPhone first.
Siri wanted to speak. So. What'd you do? So we'll move to Commissioners Minute. Mr. Boils?
Uh, I mean, I'm, I'm proud of me here and I just, um, I'm gonna miss the, um, diverse, uh, set of topics that we enjoy the opportunity to, um, hear about, debate, discuss and, uh, decide on as commissioners.
Mr. Ponder? Mr. Ketchel? Mr. Goodwin?
Whenever y'all are ready, we'll get started. Hey, that went in and out. Sounded kind of creepy, didn't it?
I'll make the motion. Oh, we got there. Oh, we're there.
Hey. That's right. All right. Welcome to the public hearing budget meeting for September seventeenth, five-oh-one PM, starting a few minutes late. We will begin with an invocation by Commissioner Boils, pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Ponder. Please stand with us. Oh, no, backwards. I was so backwards. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Lord, for the food. Hallelujah. Heavenly Father, we thank you for tonight. Thank you for wisdom, discernment, and understanding. Thank you for wise counsel. Thank you for this team up here, Lord of Commissioners, that you anointed and appointed for such a time as this. Thank you for every constituent that calls this place home. Now, Lord, I pray your peace and blessings upon this budget as we move forward to honor and bless our constituents, but above all, honoring you. And we ask of all this in your amazing name. Amen.
Thank you both. Mr. Hofstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, this is a culmination of a process that takes a number of months. We typically start around February, pulling a budget together. Results in a number of meetings with our department directors, constitutional officers. Pull an initial budget together. We bring it to the board in July in a series of workshops. And from those workshops, we make adjustments to the budget as the board directs. And with that, we bring back a final project to, or product to you. I am not going to bore you with all the details of a PowerPoint presentation. I have three actions that are needed from the board this evening. That's approval of the aggregate millage rate, approval of the MSTU millage rate, and then approval of the final budget. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I just need to read into the record very briefly on your first action, which is approval of the aggregate millage rate. We are asking for approval of the aggregate millage rate at three-point-nine-six-seven-one mills, which is greater than the rollback rate of three-point-seven-six-eight-three mills by five-point-two-eight percent. Again, this is the all-inclusive millage rate, which includes your property tax millage of three-point-eight-three-zero-eight mills and your MSTU millage, which is applied to the unincorporated areas of the county of point-two-nine-nine mills. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I would ask for action on that first item, and then I'll walk through the other two.
I'm going to have a, yeah. Yeah, we need to open for public comment. For anyone from the public desire to speak. I have no speaker cards. Seeing none, we'll move forward to the next item. A motion for the first item, Commissioner Ponder, a second by Commissioner Boils. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with a aye. And there's no opposition. Passes unanimously. The next item, the final MSTU millage rate resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item is for your MSTU rate millage, and that is the millage that is applied to the unincorporated areas of the county, and that's for support of our Stormwater Division and our unincorporated county parks. So we take a portion of those dollars, split it between those two functions, and that's how we fund those two operations. The millage that we are asking the board's approval for this evening is for point-two-nine-nine mills. We've held that rate constant, I believe, now for the eleventh year. And that rate is greater than the rollback rate of point-two-eight-five mills by four-point-nine-one percent. And with that, Mr. Chairman, we'd ask for the board's support and approval.
Motion by Commissioner Ketchel. Second by Commissioner Ponder. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with a aye. And it passes unanimously. The next item is the final budget resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And the last item is our final budget resolution, and this is for approval of the tentative budget. This is your all-in budget, and that figure is six-hundred-and-forty-eight-million-three-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand-nine-hundred-seventy-one. That's inclusive of your general fund revenues, property taxes, state shared revenue, state revenue sharing, all of your enterprise funds, and your special assessments. So that's inclusive of everything. One thing I do need to mention, it's part of the board's direction back, and I believe it was our July ninth workshop. The board gave direction for us to look into staffing up an operation within TDD, supplemented by TDD dollars, as a maintenance group, if you will, for the properties that we're taking on in the north end of the county. We have included that in the budget. I believe that Craig was at four positions, five positions that we included in the budget. The funding is in the budget, but I just wanted to state for the record that that is included in this overall budget. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll pass it back to the board for approval.
I'll move approval.
Second by Commissioner Boils, second by Commissioner Ponder. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with a aye. And it passes unanimously. The hearing is adjourned.